All right.
First ten minutes are great.
All right, ten seconds.
There's none of that.
Okay, welcome, all those in TV land. This is the Village of Rybrook Planning Board meeting. Let's all who are here rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I give allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
My name is Rob Goodman. I'm Chair of the Planning Board. Also in attendance tonight are my planning colleagues John Grzan, Amy Schoen, Ed Teig, and Lenny Weisman. Also in attendance is our Village Attorney, Robert Zitt, our Superintendent of Public Works, who should be here soon, Michael Noack, and our Village Planning Consultant, the partner is Ian Hannover, Sarah Brown. And also, always, thank you Tara Orlando for coordinating this meeting and doing the minutes, which is our first item on the agenda. Does anyone have any comments concerning the minutes? Okay.
Great job by Tara. Those minutes were hard to do.
Yeah, no, no, it's hard to plug out.
She did a good job.
Yeah, and should we wait for Mike, or where is he? He does the count.
He was here just a minute ago. Robert.
Oh, Robert, oh, thank you. Can I have a motion and second to adopt the minutes?
Moved.
Second. Amy, and I second. Yes.
Mr. Grzan, excuse. Shown? Michelle?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Teague?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes, okay. Our first item, we have two items, two local laws, and the first is a moratorium on review and approval of applications for battery energy storage systems.
Can we just go back to the item that was deferred for the next meeting?
Oh, which one?
King Field.
King Field, yeah.
The applicant did that on their own.
Yes, he did.
I guess they didn't have the report ready or what?
No, no, no. They're going to be back in September when you're covering me, unfortunately.
Okay, then you will definitely handle it when you come back in October.
Yeah, if it takes that, yeah. Although, John, your efficiency is not outdone by anybody, so it makes...
I know, but we do not have to take up the resolution at the time we close the public hearing. We can actually, you know, do the resolution the following meeting. I think we've been doing that almost every meeting, but that's almost like an exception by the bylaws.
Well, I mean, we can always extend a, when there's an adjournment, we can always extend a public hearing, or we can close the public hearing and then take a vote the following meeting. You can do whatever the board wants to do.
I think if something is not difficult, yes, but sometimes you may need, you know, a little more time after the meeting to digest what transpired.
Well, I think that they'll probably, you'll come to a consensus on that. I think everyone will probably, but that's fine.
Okay.
On the moratorium relating to battery energy storage systems, Mike, when you're ready, why don't you give us a background of this? Because I wasn't really knowledgeable about this area, and it's actually quite interesting.
Thank you.
The battery energy storage?
Right, yeah. What are they and why are we concerned about them? Okay, so battery energy storage systems are portable units that are being installed as green technology. They are adaptive to multiple installations. They're basically tractor-trailer sized containers that hold lithium ion batteries within them. They have a self-contained cooling system to keep them cool, and they are installed, 1, 2, 5, 20, 80 of them. It depends on where they're going and how big you want to build a system, okay? So these are installed, hooked up to the grid to do a number of things. They can supplement the power grid if there's a low voltage situation, so when there's a heat wave and Con Edison reduces the voltage by 10 percent, these lithium ion batteries can be pulled into service to add that extra voltage into the grid. They can be utilized in storm situations where they could power a certain portion of a grid at a given time. So for example, during a hurricane, they could power that municipality, or they could power the grid for X amount of hours, potentially.
Mike, who is the "they"?
The system.
Is this kind...
Hold on, we will get into that.
Okay.
Okay? So these units can do multitude of things. They are usually either powered from the grid directly as a renewable battery, like your drill has a battery, or your cellphone has a battery. They could be recharged at nighttime and then used during the day during peak demands. They could be utilized with a solar array system, so if you have a solar field, they could harness the solar energy, store it, and then offload it into the grid. They could be connected to windmills, okay, or hydroelectric plants. So these units basically sell back electric back to the grid, back to the, either NICE Ag, Con Edison, whoever. Now, with regards who owns them, who is the "they"? It could be a number of entities. It could be private partnerships, could be large corporations. There are companies who specialize in this, could be private investors.
But Con Edison has to purchase this?
No.
No?
This is not purchased through a utility. These are standalone units. There are grants out there from multiple agencies. There are grants from the state to promote green technology. This falls under that grant. It could be private people who own 30 acres, 50 acres, who could say, "We're going to obtain a grant through one of these companies who specializes in it."
So it's like having your own generator.
It's basically a battery bank. It's basically a battery bank.
Does this exclude the residential use? Like, I know Tesla makes one that you could, that can go in your basement?
Correct. So this is more of a commercial level. There's what's called a type, it's called a tier one and tier two. So tier one is like up to 500 megawatts, I'm sorry, 500 kilowatts, and then anything over 500 is a tier two.
So this is just tier two we're talking about?
Tier one and tier two, I believe. I don't know, I don't know if this spells out tier one and tier two, but this, I believe, would just call out any B E S S.
So even like homes couldn't install?
No, no, homes can still have it. The homes could still have a battery backups system. This does not impact someone who wants to have a battery backup connected to their home, like a Tesla system or whatever brand. And when we talk about name brands, we're not here, you know, throwing out name brands to knock them or anything. That's just a descriptive.
Mike, it seems to me like you are introducing, the way you're describing, you are introducing a third party to electric grid. At one time, it used to be only one party, the supplier, the manufacturer and distributor. Now we usually have a, one party is the manufacturer or producer, generation, generator, and the other party is the overhead distributor. It's almost now there is a third party that's going to be almost like a stock market that's going to be speculative, buying on low and selling on high.
That's one of the aspects of having these installed.
I thought that these battery banks are usually set up by the generator, so that when they generate the electricity at the high demand, they are not storing energy, of course. But when the demand is low, then somebody's generating, is still generating that cheap electricity, and it goes into the batteries. So there is a lot of, it's totally a new player in the business.
It's been going on with solar for a while, though, because people are able to...
Yeah, but solar is a generator. They're generating that.
That's right.
Here is, these people are not generating.
And it's sold back to the...
So this could be utilized one of three ways. It could be just utilized as a bank, like a regular battery bank, and then it offloads its power at a time that's needed, and then it recharges at nighttime.
Well, if you have a big business, you can offload to yourself, but this one is going to be offloading most likely to the grid.
Correct, which goes on a slot in the grid, yes.
And the grid, like Con Edison, in many cases, they have to take the energy. They have no choice, they have to take it.
Does it overload Con Edison?
No, it actually supplements Con Edison, so it supplements the grid, let's put it that way. Not, let's not talk about the companies, but it supplements the grid. So, you know, but once again, it depends how it's installed, depends how it's powered, okay? That's your question, Mr. Grzan, is, well, where does the power come from? Certain ones are just installed as a battery bank that charges during low demand and then backfeeds the grid during a need. Others are powered by a solar generator or a windmill that, and it's held as a storage, because right now, solar just offloads into the grid.
We had this for years and years, but it was not a battery, it was a reservoir.
Same idea.
You generate hydro during the day and use up during the night, you still have the water, so what do you do? You pump that water to the reservoir, and then during the day, the water comes back and you generate.
Same concept, but your medium now is lithium ion instead of water, correct?
So you have, you have more couple issues with this. One is, of course, safety, and the other one, there is quite a bit of regulation involved here, yeah.
Yeah, and yeah, what is the, I think the Governor spoke to this.
Yes.
What are the, what are the concerns that she has raised that we should, that the moratorium is, the moratorium is going to give us an opportunity to do some due diligence on this issue? What are the sort of issues that we should be looking at?
So the due diligence in this regard is for first responders, obviously, like any lithium ion fires, batteries, very, very hard to extinguish. The protocol is basically to let them burn out and keep pouring water on them to cool it off as best as you can, keep the area safe, okay? So that's number one priority. Explosions are always a concern. Air quality, when these things catch fire, are always a concern. They're proximity to wetlands. There's a number of concerns that have been documented through a number of agencies and municipalities all over about these things. Key is to remember also that this technology is evolving, so lithium ion batteries, their compositions are changing. So even when these units were introduced a year or two ago and have started becoming more mainstream, that version of lithium has changed over the years. Now, for example, I'm hearing there's new composition of lithium ion with magnesium in it that's more stable, you know? So this technology is evolving as it's going around. There is history of them catching on fire, there's a database that tracks them. There were three or four of these that caught fire in New York State within the last year or two as well. So there's a history of that, but the main concerns are the location of them, the size of them, the proximity, the proximity of them to residential neighborhoods, life safety, obviously, first responder.
Noise.
Noise, not so much. There is noise cumulative from the condensers and the AC units that are built into these enclosures, but yes, noise, if you have 10, 20 of these in an area, yeah, that gets cumulative. Aesthetics comes into play, you know? So it's a number of things that come into play, and then sometimes there are situations where you need that interconnect to the power system, okay? So sometimes you need a transformer, you need proper infrastructure to tie into the grid. So now that turns into another discussion where these are situated on one property, there's a subdivided parcel, where now the transmission lines come into a substation, let's say, that might be the wrong term, but might be a substation, and that's on a separate lot where these tie into that, and the substation ties into the grid. So it just opens up a caveat, and there are procedures in place that can circumvent local authority on the state level and federal level to permit these things and override local jurisdiction.
Even if they supplement the power companies, the utilities, isn't there a risk of them interrupting them as well? I mean, as well as disrupting if something happens to these systems and they're attached to the grid? Doesn't something happen to the grid? I can't imagine that the grid would...
No, they get disconnected instantaneously.
Even if there's a fire?
This is instantaneous, same like your house.
Mr. Grzan's an electrical engineer?
No, I know.
Who has more power distribution experience than I do, but from my experience, there are safeties in place, that's why you have a substation that interconnects, you have other safeties. Can something happen? Listen, we've seen the great blackout of what, the 2000 or whenever that was? Yeah, anything could still happen, even with safeties in place, but...
My thought is, I mean, if there, a lot of them in one area, concentrated in one area, that would concern me a lot more than if there was, you know, a big system somewhere, one system connected to the grid. I think that the chance of disruption or harm or whatever, an untoward event.
These are independent of the power grid. Remember that the power grid is the backbone, the power grid operates as a normal power grid. These are little add-ons to the grid, so they're separate. So if 10 of these go down, that's fine. They have no bearing on the system, but once again, you lose that regular, that additional voltage regulation, that modulation that you could backfeed the grid in a certain area to take care of that, but think of it this way, 50, 70 years already, 100 years, electric has been out there, Con Ed's been reducing voltages for years. Or utility companies, I should say, have been doing it. So have electronics been hurt over the years? Yes, there are certain things that could be hurt, but these supplement the grid in times of use. They are incentivized, they are a financial investment, and there is financial gain in them, okay? But from our perspective, we need to determine life safety things, we need to determine codes, proper procedures, placement of these units, what zones can they be permitted in? Because right now, they are permissible in a lot of our codes, in a lot of our zoning codes.
So it sounds like we're waiting for someone from the New York State to update the fire code based on whatever findings they might find, then we can change local laws. And in the meantime, we're here to vote on a moratorium on people being able to apply for these. Am I, I'm just making sure I understand correctly?
So the Village Board is considering the moratorium as part of that process. They send the legislation to the Planning Board, and the Planning Board just provides input, report and recommendation.
I think, Robert, it's no brainer that a moratorium is a good thing. I mean, they're just so evident. Because we don't have much in the code in terms, other than chapter 13, which deals with the electrical installation. There is nothing in the code that takes care of these specific, very, very technical devices. So moratorium, as far as I'm concerned, it's a blessing.
Sounds like we have a vote.
I think what we need to look at it, you know, Governor is speaking for the state as a whole. Lot of open land, lot of opportunity for development, and of course, you know, it's going to improve the grid, everybody looks to improve. But if you look at the village, and a little reading that I did, other than the residential units, which could be probably installed outright, large scale, which are utility units, are the question. And then there is a commercial units, which is the middle one, unless some big developer comes in and wants to put a big office building in the Rybrook, and wants to have a battery pack so that they can, you know, adjust the rates and play with the rates, I don't see much in the terms of us or the dealing with the residential.
It sounds to me, though, that you could have, you could have an investment group buy up whatever land they can buy up, and they put one of these facilities in it, not just for Rybrook, but for all of Westchester.
If you look at our code right now, there's no way in the heck that they could come and do that in a Village of Rybrook with the current code. There is absolutely not, the way our zoning is laid out.
That's precautionary.
Okay, precautionary.
So I don't want to get into the nitty gritty of it right now, because that's for a later discussion. However, I will tell you, on a state and federal level, there are procedures that are in place that will override local municipal codes.
They're going to mandate.
Okay?
Yeah.
And they're out there, I don't have it in front of me, but there are procedures in place where things like this could be permitted in places that a municipality may not want. And there are small businesses around the state that are on 2, 3 acres that have 4, 5 of these units on them, okay? There's grant money out there, there's ways to do this, there are programs to promote this in place. So there are ways around codes if there are no specific codes. So the, the goal here is to...
Local code, yeah, the local code takes precedence, yeah.
Correct, takes precedence, correct, but yeah.
So the purpose is to guard against it, not necessarily to improve the quality of life, but to guard against detriment to the quality of life. That's really what we are saying.
Sounds like it's to wait for the code to be updated.
Yeah, I think it's just a new tech...
Safeguard the village and the residents.
I think it's just a new technology that no one really knows what the ramifications of it are. The current law doesn't really regulate it, and I think right now, fortunately, there's really no one that has filed an application for approval of any of these units, so essentially we're trying to get, you know, ahead of the curve before someone knocks on the door and says, "We want to put in one of these units," and we don't necessarily want it, but we also don't have any regulations governing it. And that is actually, when I heard this, it justified in my mind why we needed this meeting, because we need to get the moratorium in place before it attracts, you know, people that want to game the system.
I said it's no brainer for a moratorium.
Let's vote.
Definitely need it.
So, yeah.
If we do a moratorium here, can the state override that?
I think the way it's written, there's some judge can override certain sections of the law, but not the entire law.
Yeah, I mean, the state would have to invalidate home rule.
Yeah.
The state would have to invalidate home rule, it would be, it would be a whole show, so I don't know that there's something that the state could do immediately.
I think there's, there appears to be a consensus that the resolution requesting a moratorium, that our report and recommendations, that's a good idea. Do you, we also have this other local law. Do you want us to do them together or separately?
Separately, probably, because...
Okay.
So if you want, the resolution, if somebody would make it, would be to, sorry?
Well, I'm sorry.
It would be to issue the report and recommendation as prepared. One of the comments was that the Planning Board concurs with the law as proposed, the law being the moratorium. So you would just make a motion, second, run through the vote to send the report and recommendation to the Village BOT.
What would the report and recommendation, basically, the gist of the report and recommendation?
It's the gist of the, the gist of the report is that the Planning Board concurs that it's a good idea.
It's a good idea.
Right, right.
Not necessarily that these things are going to reduce my electric bill.
No, your electric bill.
We're going to come back.
Yeah, I mean, we support basically the local law this way.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
So, let me see, we need, we need to approve that, and then we need to send it on to the Board of Trustees, so we need two resolutions, two actions, so, so, okay, with respect to the report and recommendation.
Motion to adopt it.
I need a motion and a second to adopt the recommendation supporting the local law.
Motion to adopt.
Just ask a question. Once this moratorium is in place, there would be a separate directive or the request to study the changes in the code that would be required.
Once it's sent back to the BOT, that's what they're going to be doing.
So we will have an opportunity to debate what changes are necessary.
We're going to come back.
Sure, it's going to come back.
Different than any...
All right, sure, understand, good.
So, move motion?
I did.
A second, I'll second.
Mr. Grzan?
Yes.
Mr. Richman's not here.
Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Teague?
Yes.
Mr. Weisman?
Yes, sir.
Chairman Goodman?
Yes, sorry. And also, we need a motion and a second to send the report and recommendation to the Board of Trustees. Transmit it to them.
Second.
And the Chairman would sign on that report and recommendation. You don't need the meeting or the Board to review and approve the report and recommendation.
No, no, we're sending it, we're sending it on to them.
Let's make sure that that's understood, because you don't have...
We're sending it on to them right now.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Grzan?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Teague?
Yes.
Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Chairman Goodman?
Yes.
Thank you.
There's another local law, thanks for the explanation, Mike. It's interesting technology, you know?
It is, it is, it has a purpose.
Yeah, that's for sure. There is another local law also requesting a moratorium on the review and approval of applications for the conversion of commercial to residential development projects in the village. And what's the background of this, Mike, if you know?
Background of this is pretty much as stated in the local law is to protect the, is to protect the commercial business zones of the village, to protect the future stability of the homestead, non-homestead tax base for the future, and to protect the tax levy of the village and the residents. That's the intent of this local law.
Of why we need the moratorium? Right now, you know, if you have a commercial development in its zone for commercial, how can that be changed to the homestead, the residential, 1, 2, or 3 family homes without changing the zoning code? So I don't see the, the other one was very clear cut case for me to have a moratorium. I don't see the need or urgency on this one as much.
Well, for instance, affordable housing, though, has a floating zone.
Floating zone for affordable housing. Certain commercial, and I have to look at the code, but certain commercial and business zones encompass lesser zoning, lesser zoning categories within them. So you could have a business district which will allow a...
Residential.
A 2-family residential zone within it outright, okay? We've had that in the business district at the north end of the village, where you have a commercial location that went to residential, that built residential outright.
But you could have also, a lot of small businesses could see an opportunity to sell very quickly and make a killing.
And that affects the tax base of the village, that affects the tax roll to homestead, non-homestead, which affects the residents. And we're looking to protect the residents in doing this. So we want to study what can happen if XYZ happens, what could happen if 1, 2, 3 happens to certain zones. So it's to analyze what are the ramifications in the future, and listen, the code may be, yeah, this is where the village wants to go. The code may be, no, this is not where the village wants to go. So it's to protect the residents.
I, since the years that I have been involved with this board, unwritten thing that drives the development is usually tax base. I'm not so sure that that is the good game plan. I'm not privy to how the Board looks at the tax revenue, commercial versus the residential. But I do know from the sitting on this board that there have been properties that have been tried to be developed, estate commercial and to be developed commercial, and... been tried to be developed, estate commercial and to be developed commercial, and that's not moving as fast. I do know for fact that right now, there is a very, very strong demand for residential dwelling units in the village.
Yes, absolutely.
I'm in the market for a place.
It's not just in the village, it's all over the country and the world.
I'm sorry?
That's not just in the village, it's all over the country and the world. And there's also a strong demand for commercial tax base, right? We've also lost as a village a lot of commercial income, which...
But this is, I don't understand. If you lose the commercial tax revenue and you replace that by residential, what is the bottom line? I don't know whoever does the tax.
That's what we're trying to understand. Right now, if you look at the homestead, non-homestead tax rate, which I don't have in front of me, believe the non-homestead tax rate is much lower than, I'm sorry, the homestead, yes, I'm sorry. Your commercial tax rate is much higher than your residential. So, when you replace that, you're replacing with a much lower tax rate. So, you're losing significant amount of revenue to residential.
That may be true, but I have not seen the number to support that theory. Everybody that wants to develop a commercial business in the village or any other place, they're looking for a tremendous tax givebacks, all right? And I do know that on the residential side of the equation, the tax base is very set to the price of the house. And if any of you that are looking to buy a house in Rybrook, I'm sure you looked at the projected tax rate. And, you know, forty, fifty thousand dollars per home in Rybrook is nothing unusual these days.
Correct. And the village board and staff, administration have done a great job at staying under the tax cap, managing the rates as best as we can. We move forward every year with whatever credits we could accumulate from the prior year to stay under the tax cap, okay? We've been under the tax cap just about every single year that it's been in effect, okay?
What was the last commercial property that was built in the village of Rybrook? I don't recall. I'm not saying, no, I just don't recall the name.
Kingsfield.
Well, Kingsfield.
That's residential.
That's residential.
Oh, right, that's right, commercial.
That's an example of a commercial.
That's an example of.
That went residential.
Correct.
And depending on the economy, you could have businesses that are not making money, that see that converting to residential is actually profitable for them.
So, for example, the village has a hotel tax, okay? That, in its peak, was generating half a million to seven hundred thousand dollars in revenue, which offset taxes for residential.
If you have a development like Kingsfield, hundred homes at forty thousand, that's four million dollars right there. What commercial property was paying four million dollars on that property before?
But that's what the village board wants to understand. What was the valuation of that property as a commercial entity? What would have been the tax implications of it as a business entity versus what it is? So, this is to analyze the whole village and see where the market's going, where the shift is going from a development perspective, from a residential-commercial perspective, and to understand what needs to be done to protect the residents, so that we're not burdened with losing a commercial tax base, which then falls on residents' shoulders.
Rexon was having a lot of trouble selling.
So, your forty, fifty thousand could become eighty, ninety thousand when you start losing potentially your...
But there are three or four commercial properties right now that we can name that are idle, that, you know, they came off finally, if they came off the tax base, but the businesses are closed, all right?
Yeah, but then you're confronted the issue with, when you have failing businesses, what sort of incentives you want to create those owners to do something productive with it? They may decide that they would rather just cash out of the property, sell it to a developer for X billions of dollars, and then, you know, they're out. But we don't know what the law, from the village's standpoint, we don't know what the long-term ramifications of that are.
Correct.
Whether or not that is going to end up being a positive or a negative. To John's point, it could be a positive.
Hundred percent.
Or it could end up being, you know, a drain in that there's no set off against the residential taxes.
So, the village has...
I like to see, this needs to be approached with an open mind. You know, we cannot say the commercial is better than residential tax.
Nobody's saying that.
That would be a mistake if you do that.
Nobody's saying that. We want to understand exactly what it is to have an open mind, to make those educated decisions.
I think that's the point of the moratorium. I think right now, there are no applications, both pending or even in the pipeline relating to this issue.
No applications in the pipeline, no application pending, no.
Which means that it's a good time to put it on ice until we get a sense of where the values are, so.
But Mr. Chairman, if I've read this, you know, reason for this moratorium, maybe I've not read it correctly. It almost implies that we, you know, we don't want to be going from commercial to homestead, because from the tax revenue purpose, we don't want to lose the commercial tax base. And we're losing it, whether we like it or not, we are losing it. And we need to think about how we're going to replace it. And is it commercial, the residential, the best way to replace it?
That's what we want to see.
All right?
I think six months is fair, especially considering anyone that would take on one of these projects. The diligence period would be more than six months before they'd make an offer on a commercial property. So, I think it's fair from our perspective. I also think that since there are no applications pending, and there really haven't been any applications for a while, it's really a matter of depending on which side of the ledger you get the positive outcome, whether or not the village can create incentives to go in that direction. So, that if it ends up being that commercial properties are really a real boon to the village in terms of its tax base and giving, you know, residents sort of, you know, a break on taxes, you know, what should, what sort of incentives can the village, would huge tax incentives up to a certain point, you know, encourage commercial properties? Or if it's the opposite, then when they ask for tax reductions, you say no, because it's not in our interest. And I sort of think that, at least with one of our projects, there's been a big battle over whatever tax agreement there are for deductions and things like that. And at the end of the day, I don't know whether the deal is such a great deal for the village. So, you know, I do think, I think John's point is, is that, is that if the purpose of the moratorium is to figure out a way of keeping commercial property, that's really not the question. The question is whether or not it makes sense, whether we know what the situation is so that we can make a principled decision one way or the other. I think that's his concern. And I agree, I think the moratorium should be, I don't know, maybe there's phraseology you can put in there that makes it clear that it's not, it's not simply protecting commercial property, it's figuring out.
It's an analysis, an analysis of which is better for the village and the revenue stream of the village.
Yeah.
Even the, what do you call it, the future plan for the village, you know, it talks about the demographics of the village is changing.
Yeah.
And whether we like it or not, it's going more towards residential. In the last few years, if you just look at the boom in the school system, how, you know, we went from D, we are approaching C plus already in terms of the size of the school. It tells you alone that, you know, it's residential. Now, that defies, that contradicts my point about the taxation, because with the bigger school, you need more, you need more expenses.
We've moved away from the comprehensive plan.
Thank you.
Well, that's it. We don't really know how this fits into the comprehensive plan. And it actually, you know, look, we made a determination, I think a year ago, that the objectives of the comprehensive plan still made sense. But, you know, that's subject to, you know, a principal evaluation of whether or not the policies make sense. And if you take the incentives created by the comprehensive plan, maybe it's not the same now as it was then, don't know. But anyway, I don't know, Robert, whether, you know, you and I could maybe work out some language in the report and recommendation. But it's really just, I think to John's point, I think it sort of makes sense that the moratorium is really to evaluate this issue of whether or not a residential or commercial tax base is good for the village the way it's sort of been going on right now and on into the future, what is economically in the best interest of the village, going residential, going commercial, and how much of one or the other.
That seems fair. That's not what it says right now.
Right, right, yeah. I think John's right about that, so.
What I would like to also see during this six months, a year, whatever it takes, I don't think it's an urgency. If you need to extend it to a year, do it. There should be some sort of a task force, I hate task force, but where it would be composed of the consultants and the discipline, you know, from the boards and various, that would study this question of taxation. And where are we heading as a community, as the village? And because that really, I'm telling you, right now, you know, there is no homes to buy in this town.
That's true. And people who, we face that too. You want to move someplace and you can't move here, because it's not there.
And the next year, I find out the property was sold for a couple hundred thousand dollars more than what was initially the seller was asking. Come on, crazy.
So, you know, for the limited purpose of the, of the report and recommendation, it's really just to give your position on whether or not you support the idea of a moratorium so that the village board of trustees can examine all of these issues. Where I want to be careful is that, you know, a lot of what I'm hearing are legislative determinations to be made by the BOT. So, when we craft whatever kind of language we put in there...
Robert, there are two distinct, different issues here. There was no question on the first one. I was hundred percent sold on the need for a moratorium. On this one here, it is what is it that you're going to do during the moratorium? And I don't really understand fully what the village intends to do during the moratorium.
I'd like to know what, also, because it is a legislative issue.
What, like, who's, what kind of studies, who's going to be undertaking these studies? What are we going to be, that's what I...
And who's going to be doing the studies and how much, you know?
Look, I think, I think a report and recommendation is just that. I mean, we can support the moratorium, but we can also recommend that the BOT take cognizance of certain issues of concern. One is, is that, is that it's not just a matter of protecting commercial property, it's really determining whether or not promoting commercial property vis-à-vis residential property is good or bad for the village. That's one issue. And the second is, is that we would recommend that there be a task force or some other body established charged with the responsibility of helping to evaluate this. Otherwise, it'll go, it'll be six months and nothing will happen.
Yeah.
And meanwhile, you know, if there are any opportunities out there to convert, they're not going to happen, because the moratorium is going to be in place. So, I think that, you know, I can definitely work with you on language. I don't think we have to hold up anything. But I think those, at least those are the two concerns I see, you know, coming out here. And I think they're sort of, you know, legitimate, because, you know, a moratorium not used, you know, effectively is just a waste of time.
Yeah, I think I read somewhere earlier, and it doesn't seem to be in the language anymore, but I thought I read something earlier.
Could you speak up?
Sorry, sorry. I thought I read something earlier in the language, and it doesn't seem to be there now, that said something to the effect of the moratorium being for six months, but the Board of Trustees could extend at their discretion. Did I see something like that?
It's still there.
Yeah, so I, they can extend that, but part of the reason that was placed into the report and recommendation was based on what the county of Westchester had put in their referral letter. They asked that if the board were going to extend the moratorium, that there be some type of measures in place to facilitate how the board does that. So, that's what that was really intended.
Right.
I also think that we'd want to have to come back to the planning board to extend the moratorium.
But you also don't want it to go on indefinitely and nothing get done, to your point, right?
Yeah, I mean, look...
There are procedures for that, and that's what, and that's what the council was saying. You have to meet a threshold to make that happen. You can't just extend it for no reason.
Right.
The board's going to have to have some historical evidence of what eventually is going to be their conclusion or their vote. And it's a very significant one. I think that they would be very foolish to not take all the time they need and be diligent about it.
And so, that raises the other question I had, I still don't have answered, is who's undertaking these studies?
From, it's going to be up to the Board of Trustees. Frankly, I don't know.
So, they'll hire third-party consultants to do this, basically. Okay, I'm just trying to understand what we're talking about here. All right, I got it.
We will...
Yeah.
Got it. As a village, we will either do an RFP or we will do a solicitation for that or pursue, under our professional agreements, we will pursue consultants to perform this type of work. And the village has always been transparent in it. We've always had either task forces, or we've had groups of people involved, whether it's a chairman from each board. We've, you know, as a whole village, we're very open about these types of procedures. So, it will be only open, and they will pick a consultant or a company that will do what they need.
Well, I mean, look, we have to, we have to have faith that the Board of Trustees raise these issues because they want to address them. Otherwise, they wouldn't have to do anything. So, I do think that with respect to the second, the law, I do think, you know, the planning board can sort of make some, you know, recommendations just to make sure that, that it's, to John's point, we're not focusing on only one side and not the other side. I think to approach this tax issue with an open mind makes a lot of sense to me. And, but you and I can work on that language. But in terms of the, what we want to send to the board, we, I sort of addressed those issues. We can circulate the report and recommendation if you guys want to see what the language is.
I would love to see that, personally.
And it's only, whatever this litmus test that we're using for this is really tax base, nothing else. You're not looking at any other pros or cons or just a tax base, which I think it's a very narrow, narrow approach. I think there are more to a community than a tax base.
So, I think for this one, the resolution would be to refer the report and recommendation after it's accepted. You would accept it now, subject to the condition that it's finalized in a final form approved by village council, and then you can, you can also send it to the village board tonight.
Okay.
That makes sense. So, whatever we wind up putting together, we'll have the authorization at this point to send it back down. This way, there's no need for another meeting.
Exactly.
And a moratorium would be a little broader point of view rather than just narrow point of view with tax alone. That's my only concern. It's not to preserve the commercial tax base. That would, to me, that's a mistake.
Yeah, yeah. We want to preserve our tax base.
Right.
Period.
The highest, the maximum tax base.
Whatever it is.
I thought we would, I thought the object is to preserve the quality of life in the village.
We'll see what we can do about that. But, look, I think that the, I think that the moratorium makes sense. I think that the BOT is going to be issuing the moratorium at their next meeting, which is Tuesday. Is it Tuesday?
They have a public hearing on both, on both moratoriums.
Right, right.
Tuesday, I think I may, I think I may have time just to see what they say.
So, I think, and I, and I want the moratoriums issued, because at this point in time, I don't want anyone gaming the system by putting in applications and then expecting to be grandfathered out of whatever.
I still would be very clever on their part to circumvent the code, the code regulations. I don't see, I don't see how they can maneuver that.
Where there's a will, there's a way.
Yeah, but the code is pretty rigid.
Anyway, can we, subject to the two modifications that we're going to make, is the resolution to...
To adopt the...
Yeah, to, yeah, to adopt the proposed local law acceptable?
Well, I move it.
Okay.
Second.
Mr. Goozan?
Yes.
Michonne?
Yes.
Mr. Teague?
Yes.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Report back.
Same thing, for sending it to the BOT.
Motion, second, to report, board it out to the Board of Trustees.
Moved.
Second.
It could be here all night.
Mr. Goozan?
Yes.
Michonne?
Yes.
Mr. Teague?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Chairman Goodman?
Yes.
Thank you.
No one knows which, who to do it. Usually, there are people that are just like-
I know. Do we, does it look like we will have the meeting on the eleventh of September?
Yes.
Okay, good.
There are one or two applications and a hundred and thirty-three, yeah. On September eleventh, you thought about, yeah.
Yeah, I think September, I think it's on the eleventh, if I'm not mistaken, yes.
And I'm not going to be there, but maybe we can have a meeting, I'm not sure when, I'm going away in like the second week, I think, September fifth, for like ten days. So John is going to be covering the meeting for me, and also Scott Mendelson is going to sort of back up John. But I think it's good to sort of expose him to sort of our agenda meetings and things. So I would want to probably set up an agenda meeting before I leave, which may be a little bit on the early side, but I think it's a good way. Hopefully, we'll get some input from, you know, Mr. Goldfarb on what they're doing in Kingsfield, so that we can have a discussion about this before, you know, maybe more than the week before. So I'll let, you know, I'll let Michael know and also get a-
I think that's an imperative that we have, the agenda meeting.
I agree, yeah, yeah.
Definitely do.
Yeah, but I want to participate in that, so it'll be a little bit easier, yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely, please.
Okay, all right, can I have a motion and a second to adjourn?
Move.
Move.
All, all, aye, aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Hey, that was good.